Second, I firmly believe there will be a Greyhound track in Hudson and I want it to be the best one possible and one which truly benefits the community. Corland Properties is that track. Three, Bert has strong roots in the community. He lives here, has built his businesses here, is a successful developer in this area. He is committed to our community. His efforts preserve the historic Opera House and Second Street Crossing. He is one of the most experienced real estate developers in the state. He owns and operates thirty-five AutoStop stores. He's involved in the new Southside Center. He's a partner in a group developing fifty acres of land in Woodbury as an office, retail, and shopping center. He acquired, subdivided, and sold the land which now contains Perkins, Hardee's, Comfort Inn, and Super 8 motels on Exit Two. Bert was a finalist in Venture Magazine and Arthur Young 1988 Entrepreneur of the Year Award and his company, SSG Corporation, is listed by Arthur Andersen and Company Certified Public Accountants as one of the top one hundred privately held Wisconsin companies. As one of the sponsors for Entrepreneur of the Year Award, Mr. Ken Hyzer, President of the First National Bank, stated that for the past ten years Bert Nordstein has been responsible for more improvement and development in the Hudson community than anyone else. All of the projects which Bert becomes involved with end up being first-class attractive assets to the community. I'd like to give you an overview tonight covering four base areas. Number one, address the information or misinformation about Corland Properties. Two, tell you why I became involved in this project, who my partners are, and how St. Croix Meadows will be managed. Three, address the concerns and questions that have been raised including traffic, crime, lighting, and noise. And four, share with you what I believe Corland Properties and St. Croix Meadows can bring to Hudson. What we are proposing is an opportunity to retain the spirit and character of our community. Without the economic development that Carmichael Group and Corland brings, we'll become just another bedroom community, dependent on the twin cities for jobs, unable to support a downtown and the vitality that comes along for a self-sustaining town that is missing in the suburbs. This new suburban Hudson may be acceptable to some, but to those of us who live where we work, shop in stores in our own communities, and take pride in the city of our own, then orderly and economic development is crucial. When I decided to get involved in Corland Properties, I was concerned how Greyhound racing would affect our community. I also wanted to know everything I could about the Heck family and HAH. I can assure you that I had thorough examination into my partners. After all, long after the public hearing is over, long after our application is submitted to the state, long after the issues before us tonight are settled, I'm still going to be here doing business in Hudson whether we win or lose. Let me tell you a little bit about the Heck family. Three family members, Lawrence Heck and the two daughters, own ninety-five percent of the business, which owns and operates two successful Greyhound racing parks in Florida. Flagler Greyhound Racing Park in Miami has been in business for about fifty years. The Heck's have had it for twenty-one years. They also own the Naples Fort Myers operation in Oneida Springs, which they bought thirteen years ago. The quality of their racing is considered to be outstanding and they have a reputation for innovation and high standards when it comes to their operations. The Heck's are prominent charitable culture and civic-minded family in Florida. They serve on the Board of Trustees for the University of Miami, Florida International University, Florida State University. They've made major contributions to charities, including the University of Miami, Miami State University, where buildings with a name in their honor. Corland Properties and St. Croix Meadows will be managed by myself and the Heck through a management committee. I will chair that committee which will oversee the entire development from construction through operation. Though it is too early to have identified and hired the best person to serve as facilities manager, we're looking for only people with experience in that area and solid reputation. The manager will report directly to the management committee. Ken McAdams, who many of you know, and our engineers, Midstate associates, will work with us and work with the city through the construction of the roads and the utilities. Ken has more than eighteen years of experience as a city planner and planning consultant. Gordy Andersen has tremendous experience and success in bringing new businesses to Hudson and will be responsible for finding the right industries for the development. Ken, Gordy, Midstate, myself, and others will be working closely with the city throughout the project. I'd like to point out that it's unusual partnership where a private developer not only builds an industrial park but finds the businesses to fill it. In a few minutes, I'll turn the floor over to the experts who will discuss the technical aspects of the project, and in particular, the findings of their independent studies. Studies conducted by leading experts in the field and in many cases confirmed by the city's own studies. First of all, I want to discuss the overall project. The site was not selected casually. The state's committed to build a Carmichael interchange. The city is also committed to build a Carmichael bypass. The bypass is long been intended to be located in the general area where we show it. The bypass will be capable of handling the traffic generated by the Greyhound park, a land that's long been identified by the city as the site for the second industrial park. Corland Properties fits in with the Carmichael Group's plan. John Brunchkin of Carmichael said in recent news articles, "We feel that this Greyhound racing park is necessary to draw the additional activities around the site to allow such major development within the city of Hudson." The Greyhound park is needed to make the industrial park work before we see any income from millions of dollars will be spent to build roads, sewers, and other things necessary for substantial development so we can make the investments because of the Greyhound park. The property has been shown highly commercial at the city staff's recommendation. The natural contours of the land and the state-of-the-art technology will protect nearby residents from disruptive sound or light. The unique opportunity we have to build from the ground up, designing the land uses the road as the utility with specific purposes in mind. Carmichael Group, Corland Properties, and St. Croix Meadows represent a huge investment, as much as a hundred million dollars or more. Development of that scope doesn't occur without disruption. The vast majority of Hudson residents, however, I believe, will see only benefit. Jobs, expanded tax base, supporting better schools and community services, and a thriving business climate. Even for those close to the development, we are doing everything possible to minimize the disruption. Still, our development goals should be strong for some and I don't dismiss that. We would all like to be surrounded by four hundred acres of green field, but that sometimes isn't possible. The real character of Hudson, the Hudson most of us want to preserve, isn't that of a sleepy village that we leave in the morning and return to at night. Hudson is a thriving small town where people can work and live and shop and be involved in their community. This is a Hudson we are trying to save that has missed a quarterly planned economic development. Many, many numbers have been mentioned regarding our project and how it will benefit Hudson. Some estimates say it results in over three million dollars of additional tax revenues annually. Some indicate less than that amount. What I'm telling you is there is no doubt that there's going to be a significant impact on the revenues to the city of Hudson. One study conducted by the nationally recognized consulting firm of Business Planning of Austin, Texas estimates the total dollar impact of annual operations in St. Croix Meadows will be a hundred and forty-four million dollars. Estimates by city officials have also indicated substantial revenue from the project. The city planner estimated that an added revenue to the city as a result of the track would be a agreed release, a net result of a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. More than a million dollars in additional property tax revenue which could be generated for school districts through Corland Properties. Our schools are already finished for money and with our population growing as much as it is, the school district needs additional income to maintain the high quality to currently enjoy. Now, I'd like to turn this over to Ken McAdams who can tell you more about the project and can introduce some of the independent consultants who study the project.
One of the primary concerns that we shared with the residents of the city of Hudson was transportation and how we would handle that transportation through the Corland Properties and St. Croix Meadows. And we hired the firm of Jack Leish and Associates to look at this and to address the engineering transportation concerns. And I'd like to have Jim Jody from Jack Leish Associates come up now and just make a few comments regarding the transportation studies.
Good evening. My name is Jim Jody with Jack Leish and Associates, as was mentioned. I'd like to make some general statements about traffic. County Front Avenue F will be designed to avoid any left-hand turns into the racetrack by using underpass. Twin-edged roads, limited access points, and left-hand turn lanes can easily and safely handle traffic. The Carmichael Road interchange can be modified to accommodate all traffic using a partial flow relief to diamond interchange or a combination thereof. Little changes expected to occur in a freeway operation since peak freeway traffic occurs one to two hours before peak race traffic arrives. Leaving the park, traffic will be monitored and controlled in the parking area so tie up storm cur at the intersection of County Front Avenue F and I-92. Thank you.
What was your name, sir?
Tim Jody.
So, K O D one, how do you do? Another area that we were also concerned, what was the concern regarding sound and James Ramsey from La Crosse, the professional engineer who does sound studies, and I'd like to ask him to come down here now and explain what he did in that regard.
My name is Jim Ramsey. I do business at James R. Ramsey, M S P E Engineering Consultant in Acoustics Located Offices in La Crosse, Wisconsin. I have had the opportunity for the last two months to be involved with the Corland Land Project through Midstate Associates as a special consultant in the aspects of acoustics and noise. I had the opportunity to make site visits to the nearest operating Greyhound track at Dubuque, Iowa on the full day, made considerable measurements at the Dubuque site during race operations as well as after race operations and of the background levels at that racetrack site. Based on my findings at Dubuque as well as making measurements in the Hudson community, both at general community sites as well as sites in the median vicinity of the Corland Meadows, my findings were that I found that the racetrack operations based on day and night operations, my conclusions were that the area in terms of the sounds, major sound levels at the Corland site and other areas in Hudson for comparison, I looked at noise levels from all operations of the racetrack and at different times of the day and night. My conclusions were that the area most vulnerable to increased noise from the track would not suffer from abnormal sound level elevation. I concluded that noise from the park could be eliminated with slight modifications to the location of kennels and the location of acoustical barriers. This is a conclusion to my findings. I realize it's very brief. Should there be any questions further on this evening, I'd be more than happy to address the technical issues.
Another area that we've also addressed is the area of lighting. And for that, we used a engineering firm affiliated engineers of Madison to study the lighting design requirements. The determination was that parking lot illumination would average approximately two-foot candles, which is significantly less than lighting that you would find in a typical office, which would be about twenty-foot candles. Brighter lighting would be restricted to within the facility itself and by using special lighting equipment and carefully directing lighting, we feel that we can minimize any problems with that regard. Affiliated engineers concluded in fact that the direct glare from lighting fixtures would not pose a problem in nearby areas, though reflected ground glare would be noticed in the night sky. And I've got a picture here, which I believe we referred to at the city council meeting in the past, and it gives an illustration of how lighting can be directed and you can actually distinguish the night. You can actually light up an area without the surrounding area being affected. Now, I'd like to just turn for a moment to the issue of commitment to animal health and safety. We've been working closely with veterinarians who are advising us on everything from kennel size to dog food and other matters regarding dog treatment. We've been developing policies which will not only live up to the spirit and the intent of the letter of Wisconsin law, but also to take it a step further. For example, we're developing our own program, an adoptive Greyhound program, which is modeled after the one at the Dubuque racetrack, which is recognized as one of the finest in the country. We're also going to have a veterinarian on staff who will see to it that the animals are well cared for throughout the racing careers and after their finish. And obviously, there is, dogs have to be put down and this could be carefully attended to with euthanasia program that will be handled by this veterinarian with the most humane possible means. I'd like to quote Dr. Theodore Root, who has spoken to the council and who recently wrote an article in the paper. He said, "I support the St. Croix Meadows' application of Corland Properties primarily because of their positive commitment to the health and humane welfare of Greyhounds. And we are concerned with the humane treatment of Greyhounds and we expect to be a model in Wisconsin for the treatment of, humane treatment of these animals." At this time, I'd like to introduce Laverne Burkey, who will be the security director. Laverne has had thirty-two years in law enforcement and is a former sheriff of St. Croix County.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be associated with Corland Properties. After all the years in law enforcement, I am doubly pleased to be involved in a project at ground level instead of coming in after the solved problem is there and trying to solve it. First of all, I don't anticipate too many problems with the security of the dog track. A recent survey of track communities throughout this country has found that few have ever developed. I will oversee the security department, the training, and the staffing of the total plan. My chief goal is ensure the safety of the workers as well as those attending St. Croix Meadows. I will oversee the management of the total force. The management of St. Croix Downs is going well beyond what other tracks in this country is doing. They are hiring more personnel, they're including several twenty-four-hour security spots in the area, and they are seeking the cooperation of all emergency services, police, fire, and ambulance. I will have a staff of forty-two people that I will train, that they will be schooled before they're even put to work. And they'll be trained in everything from crowd control, the first aid, to fire equipment on-site for fire prevention, and all other things that go along with training is good security option.
This is a development that I believe is needed by Hudson and in deep support in the community. Chamber of Commerce surveys show the overwhelming majority of people supporting this project. A development which will generate millions of dollars in tax revenue and other benefits in Hudson and Wisconsin. An opportunity to create four hundred construction jobs with a payroll of fourteen million dollars, which is ten percent of the total payroll for St. Croix County. Opportunity to create three hundred and seventy-five permanent jobs with a total payroll of five million dollars annually. You've heard reports from nationally recognized firms with strong records of achievement and that we can overcome any problems by traffic, by noise, traffic by designing a roadway system from scratch which will accommodate the increased traffic. They found little problems with noise alike which cannot be minimized with state-of-the-art technology. And finally, Chief Burkey himself found that crime is not a major problem in communities where Greyhounds parks are located. A track that we built in this area, the question is who controls it, who manages it, and who benefits from it? We take great pride in our community. We naturally want to preserve the best parts of that quality alike and improve on the rest. As a Hudson resident, I'm too concerned about our community. And for me and for many others, change is a difficult process. I also know that change is inevitable and change needs progress. Corland Properties is a big change for Hudson, but it will be a good change and will get many benefits. The state and its application has asked if we'll be including any community involvement or donation plans in our application. We've been saying all along there will be many, many benefits from this project. Tonight, I want to announce that Corland Properties and St. Croix Meadows will donate a minimum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually to Hudson-based community resources. This is consistent with my commitment to the Hudson area and the Heck family's longstanding tradition of giving to communities they do business in. Beginning the first calendar year of operations, we will give this money to a specially created committee which will divide it among a variety of groups such as St. Croix Humane Society, the Fifth Center for the Arts, the United Way, the Library Fund, the Christian Community Home, Hudson Memorial Health Foundation, Riverfront Park Project, and others. The committee will be made up of representatives appointed by the mayor, chief executive of the financial institution, the United Way, board of directors, the Chamber of Commerce, the St. Croix Buyer Association, and others. Each year, we'll evaluate this program using a formula in hopes of increasing that dollar amount available to the committee for distribution to the community. However, I'm committing to you at this time that for the first five years of the operation, that amount will not be less than one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I hope you agree with me that it's a significant commitment for the benefit of all.
Okay, I think what we do is we start on this side and we just jerk our way around. Anyone over here wish to address the council?
My name is Dr. Ted Root. Dr. Root, would you come up to the podium, Ken, please? My name is Dr. Ted Root. I'm a veterinarian. I've lived in Hudson for three years, seventeen sixteen Laurel Avenue. And as I mentioned in the newspaper, a letter to the editor this past week, I'm in favor of Corland St. Croix Meadows because of their strong commitment to the welfare of the Greyhounds that'll be housed at the racetrack. Ever since, I've been discussing animal welfare with the Corland Properties people. They've been very attentive, they've been very concerned about the welfare of dogs. They've not only taken my suggestions and suggestions of other veterinarians, but they've actually improved on them. I'd much rather see Corland St. Croix Meadows Racetrack mile and a half from my house than another one three miles from my home where they have made no commitment to animal welfare. And I think it would be much better for the community of Hudson and also for the Hudson area. Thank you very much.
Anyone else over here wish to address the council?
My name is Marilyn Durris. I live at ten oh six Laurel Avenue in the city of Hudson. I wish to address the number of issues that are in connection with the projected traffic generated by the proposed racetrack. I'm particularly interested in some of the numbers generated by the Leish report. Firstly, I would like to consider the number of vehicles estimated to arrive at the track in a particular evening's performance. Since the maximum number of persons estimated is eight thousand, the design condition is eighty-five percent of that, which amongst the six thousand even referred. Eighty-five percent are estimated to arrive by car and fifteen percent by bus. I think fifteen percent is really awfully high. A gentleman by the name of Howard Preston, senior transportation engineer for B R W Incorporated of Minnesota, says that for football games, soccer games, concerts, racetracks, and so on, zero to ten percent at the very most would be expected to arrive by bus. So, I think five percent is much more reasonable. That would add quite a number of vehicles to the total estimated two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three. Secondly, I think the rate of arrival, which is projected by the Leish report, is not really realistic. It states that most patrons would arrive over a three-hour period in an evening. The worst case, they say, is that fifty percent arrive over one hour, all cars arriving evenly distributed from five to seven P M. I really think that probably at least eighty percent would arrive between five-thirty and six-thirty P M. in an evening performance. After all, most middle-class people have jobs that keep them to their place of work till four-thirty or maybe later. It takes them time to get back home from their place of work. They have changed clothes, get the wife and kids, or whoever's coming with. They have to drive to the track. If we are attracting people from the entire twin cities area, what would be the time it would take from the twin cities here? At least a half an hour. It takes me thirty-one minutes from the Carmichael Road exit to the University of Minnesota exit, I think half an hour at least. That amounts to at least five-thirty. And I think most people would want to arrive about a half an hour early. That means most of the people would come between five-thirty and six-thirty, not until a whole lot of stuff. According to the Leish report, we have two thousand nine hundred and fifty vehicles coming to a certain point, eight percent, or eighty percent. This amounts to twenty-three hundred and fifty vehicles per hour. It's a lot different from thirteen hundred vehicles. Fifty-six percent by a vehicle. Now, because I think their number is quite a bit. There's been a background study, the Leish report says that around sixty-four percent of vehicles are coming. There are approximately forty-two hundred vehicles as well. Now, the rate of traffic is, we saw it in eighty vehicles. This implies I-94 traffic, but it's not really a very good one. But we have to think that, from the Leish report, there is a tendency for home-stationed vehicles to be very, very popular. We want to have time to try to, um, to, to, to. Fortunately, the Leish report says, uh, it takes two or three minutes. Uh, in the summer, background traffic is something super rare. So, we, by, uh, the four times we get the crowd, background traffic is going on by the, uh, uh, that is, uh, the crowd is getting very, 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 very popular. In the summer, it's going to be much more populated. It's going to be much more, uh, 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 very, 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 very,[1266.82] asset that we already have in exchange for a very uncertain benefit.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone else over here? Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Burke. I've been a Hudson resident for about ten years now, and I've got a few comments to make. My wife and I are business owners of an industrial park in Hudson right now. Had a business for about eight years or so. When we built the business, we built the building in an industrial park about three years ago. At that time, we were required to put in landscaping, which is almost $10,000 or $15,000. And right now, we're surrounded by three sides by fields. And when the comment is made that the industrial park is full, I have to wonder about that. And maybe, maybe the lots are sold, but we expect some buildings to be progressing. So that's one comment that I have to make is, so the park, to me, doesn't sell, but there will be some buildings up there. One other comment I'd like to make is, when the planning commission came up with the industrial park and designed it, why did they throw on themselves their residential buildings and block themselves in so now there's, you know, if there is no room or limited room for expansion in industrial parks? I really feel, another comment I have is that this should be put to a vote as far as a referendum on the dog track issue. It affects this whole community, this whole area. And I think that if the majority of people want a dog track, that everybody would be able to go along with that. If the majority don't, I really feel that we should look at that too. Thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Burke?
Should we answer him or would he not be in the industrial park at all? Maybe...
Lots have been sold, all the lots in the industrial park.
So there should be building within two years, that's the correct time limit that's given to somebody, a party. I know when we bought our lot, we were restricted to build within two years after we purchased the lot. And we've been up there for three years now, and the lots haven't been, you know, like I say, we're surrounded by fields and three sides. So...
One year by now.
Pardon me?
All of the lots were sold with a one-year buyback.
If the industrial park is full, there are still a lot of space within the same kind of ventures.
Yeah.
It's private, it's a privately owned industrial park.
I have one more comment to make, too. In light of Mr. North's credentials, I kind of wonder about having one person involved that much in his community. I think that we should maybe look at other people being involved in his community rather than having every one person have so much involvement.
Anyone else over here? Is anyone from the center section anymore?
My name is Pam Willman. I live at 389 Tower Road in Hudson. I am presenting to you, the town, the city council members, a petition of Troy Township electors who are opposed to the location of this dog track in the city of Hudson. Enclosed in my package here are four hundred and fifty-three signatures, roughly sixty-five percent of the electors who participated in the last governor's election. Our town board has already presented to you their opposition to this dog track facility. These signatures are proof that our board has expressed the concerns of the elected. Please think very carefully about your citizens' concerns and the concerns of the neighboring communities before casting your vote. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Burke?
Controper Troy.
Yes, sir.
579 O'Clough, Troy Township, that's the part of Troy Township that has not been annexed by the city. I'd like to focus my comments on traffic and focus them even more narrowly. That's already been covered, and I expect it may be covered again. But I would like to go back to a statement made by Croiland in the Croiland update in the December 18 edition of the Hudson Star Observer. They're talking about traffic congestion. They stated, "Compare the average, 2,000 vehicles which will flow in and out of St. Croix Meadows with 3M company traffic. Between 9,000 and 10,000 vehicles leave 3M's Maplewood headquarters in a half-hour period every weekday, causing few traffic problems on I-94." Anyone who works at 3M knows that that statement is a falsehood. And I think that's significant because various people from Croiland evidently have had the job of discrediting opponents and accusing them of spreading misinformation. The correct information, this data was obtained from Helen Seaver. She is 3M Employee Transportation and Travel Services. This is the most recently updated survey data. On average, approximately eighty-four hundred and seventy employee vehicles entered 3M Center daily, not 9,000 to 10,000, as Croiland claims. During the peak hour, not half-hour, approximately sixty-six hundred vehicles arrive at 3M Center in Maplewood. No data has been collected on the number of vehicle departures. By the available data, there is no reasonable nor objective basis for Croiland's inflated claims of 9,000 to 10,000 vehicle departures in one half-hour. Their figures appear to be fabricated rather than research data. There are over fifteen major entrances and exits at 3M Center in Maplewood to handle arrivals and departures. 3M Center is served by a freeway, as you know, a multi-lane frontage road, and four other arterial roads, McKnight Century, Conway, and Carlton. Three roads provide direct entrance and exits from I-94. How many exits and entrances would the proposed dog track have? At peak departure times, there are traffic backups on McKnight Century and on 3M's internal one-way road system, as much as a third of a mile. Traffic on I-94 does become heavy at peak arrival and departure times. Some points to consider: This data is in response, which I'm presenting, is in response to Croiland misinformation. If Croiland cannot or will not provide accurate information on what is objective and can be easily determined, then what kind of information do they provide on matters that are subject to speculation? Traffic congestion related to a dog track is a likely regular and prolonged problem, one that can be avoided by disallowing its presence in Hudson. By elementary arithmetic, 2,000 cars exiting a dog track facility at the rate of one per second will require more than half an hour to clear the facility. Finally, one other misstatement I heard tonight, I heard somebody from Croiland mention that the average ambience lighting in an office is 20-foot candles. That's incorrect. I've made measurements like that around the order of 40 to 60-foot candles, which calls into question their statement on the ambient lighting from the track lights upon their effect on neighbors. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. North?
I have one. When were we given this information about 3M versus Croiland? What, I guess I'm not familiar with that, but...
Well, the statement I'm referring to appeared in the Croiland update in the December 8 edition of the Hudson Star Observer. I am providing you with accurate information. My name is Wayne Hector, and I live at 525 Nordic Lane in the township of Troy. I am directly representing approximately a dozen families that are located immediately south of the proposed Croiland dog track. We are concerned that the track will directly lower our quality of life. The issues that we are concerned about are not new, but we feel that the issues have not been adequately addressed from our point of view. Before I go into the various reasons, I would like to draw you an analogy. When a person tells you that their dog does not bite, what they're actually telling you is that their dog does not bite down. When a person representing the dog track circulates information that the negative aspects of the track will be at an acceptable level, they are actually saying that it will be acceptable to them. A dog track located on parcel D of the recently annexed land will be negatively impacting our neighborhood in some of the following ways. Noise: Our neighborhood has been in existence for many years and currently resides in a peaceful rural environment. We are surrounded by homes, woods, or agricultural fields. Noise, sound levels taken by a Croiland consultant, has shown an average decibel reading of forty-seven point two, or a value approximately equivalent to a whisper. It is inconceivable to us to locate a facility that will house up to 1,000 dogs directly adjacent to an established residential neighborhood. Races that generate crowd noise and use public address systems will also occur at frequent intervals to increase the ambient noise levels to an unacceptable level. Crime: We are very concerned about the potential for increase in crime in our neighborhood. It has been noted that there is theft in other dog track parking lots. By its very nature, a track operation requires people to lose money in order to make a profit. This particular track is also relying on people to travel from a large metropolitan area from another state. It is not reasonable to assume that all theft will be limited to the boundaries of a parking lot when homes are adjacent to the track. Why wouldn't the crime increase? Traffic: Congestion will become a common occurrence to 4,000 to 8,000 track patrons travel down the same routes as the existing citizens. The traffic concerns were exhaustively analyzed by the City Planning Committee prior to deeming the dog track an inappropriate use of parcel D. Property values: To most people, their home is the single largest investment they will ever make. Prior to purchasing their home, many residents searched out the Hudson area for the unique benefits that the area provided. It is simply ridiculous to say that the opposition to the track is driven by emotional issues when a family stands to have the value of their home eroded by some unknown amount. We perceive that a track can do nothing but lower the value of our homes. To summarize, as elected officials of the people, I cannot imagine how you could possibly vote against the desires of the clear majority, as evidenced by petitions in both the city of Hudson and the town of Troy. Furthermore, the people should not be placed into the position of trying to convince the council against the track. The majority simply do not want it. By your decisions, you will be directly affecting our quality of life. We urge you as elected officials to represent the desires of the majority of the people and to follow previous decisions that were made by both the Town Board of Troy and the City Planning Committee. We are urging you to refuse the request for the dog track.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Anyone else?
My name is Bill Cranmer. I'm affiliated with the CCRD. I'm the research director of it. Most of you are familiar with the number of memos and other writings that I have given to council time to time on variety of subjects. I can do economic impact, employment, and taxes, and I will not attempt to recapitulate all of them here. You'll be pleased to hear, and certainly not in three minutes. But I did want to say a couple of things about the background of this dispute. First is that the most dog track opponents agree with Croiland's desire for an industrial park in the area where, that Croiland has optioned. We admire the initiative that Croiland has taken in creating this area as an industrial park. We agree with the, for the most part, with their desire for commercial exploitation of the opportunities near the freeway. The only area in parcel that is in dispute is the plan for a dog track on the mayor property that is formerly in Troy as part of the annexation. Second, as I said, you are familiar with the various writings that I and several other people have provided you on a variety of subjects, but I would like to say that we feel that the economic benefits of the tracks are largely imaginary. They are to some degree in regard to the tax benefit fantasy. The people who are supposed to be employed by the track would be employed at very low wage and part-time position. There would have to be hundreds of them who would be brought into Hudson. There is currently no low-income housing in Hudson to put them there, and is a quite open question, I think, where those people would live. There are insufficient numbers of people currently living in Hudson to take that kind of number of part-time jobs. In regard to crime, I have, I'd like to distinguish between four different types, and I have some materials for each of you on at least three of those types. The first type is on outside. We have no idea about the ownership of the track. As a basic fact that I was very startled to learn over the past two days when I looked through three separate sets of city files, the city attorney's files, the city clerk's files, and the city planner's files. There is almost no data on who owns the track. Who would own any, excuse me, who would own the loan? There are no financials. I was astonished that the city has no data on this at this point. We ourselves provided two and a half pages of questions regarding the financials and the ownership questions and management questions, and yet, two months later, nothing. This is particularly astonishing because this is a very late date. January 17th is the date that the track is supposed to submit its application, and a third of the material that the council is being asked to vote upon as an ownership, as well as a separate third on operations, which sort of has great deals to do with management, is simply not there. Finally, oh, not finally. Second, in the list of crimes, plus the street crime. Oh, okay. I will be, are there any questions here to add?
Any questions for Mr. Cranmer?
Well, I think it's a telling that we have a memory kind of a detail in the owners and FBI records on each of them, and they're not without evidence.
Okay, well, nobody has seen it up until this date, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So just for the record, this information is brand new, has not been reviewed by the citizens, and ought to be seen and reviewed by them, as far as I'm concerned.
Anyone else?
Hi, Ms. Kay Walsh, I live in North Hudson. Before I get started, I, we seem to have a big disagreement about traffic coming out of 3M. I live in the north part of North Hudson, and my husband leaves about the same time everybody else does, usually about 5:15 at night, and he is home at our driveway in 20 minutes. And there may be six, eight thousand cars coming out of 3M, but we've forgotten that a lot of other people drive on I-94 coming out of St. Paul, many, many cars besides the 3M people. And that highway is perfectly capable of handling much more traffic than eight thousand cars. He doesn't fly, he drives home in 20 minutes. So, anyway, one of the first things I noticed when I moved to Hudson eight years ago was a lack of shopping on the 3M side, and that's one of the first complaints that I hear is there's no place to shop. And some of these women are small children, and I'm quite distraught that they had to put their children on the car and drive all the way to St. Paul to buy anything. We grab our children from the movies, have teenagers, leave them off, have to kill time while they're in the movies, and then drive them home afterwards. We've got our birthday presents and our Christmas presents in Minneapolis and St. Paul, which is all money going out of our area. The Croiland Racing Park will enable our development to go forward and give us the services that we all need so badly here. This is not a small town anymore. There are a lot of people here with a lot of needs that are not being met. I also feel that this development will be a turning point in our future. Exhaustive studies have been done on the impact of this track, and I strongly suspect if this goes through, most people will wonder what all this stuff is about. I don't think we're really going to see this or hear nearly as much as people think. I've been to the beach track. The loudest sound we made here locally is that's the sound of our cash registers and the faster release of the local housewives and mothers who can spend more time out of their cars.
Anyone have any questions?
I'm Dave DuHollm. I'm a property tax assessor. I just, I'm 15 years in the business, business of assessing properties, and I've found that the Croiland people have tried to push this development on the basis that if we can only bring commercial development into this area, we will manage to cut the taxes for the rest of us who live here. It's been my experience in the 15 years that I've been a tax assessor, that that, I've seen projects, not only Croiland, but a number of, where they tried to sell this to the local people, and to the guys that they're going to cut their taxes, and I've never seen it happen. You cannot develop your way out of taxes. I have, I have given the council several studies where I've shown that the cities and villages in this, in this county have done a tax comparison, and those that have the largest degree of their, or percentage of their value in commercial and industrial property have also got the highest taxes. The highest have got $230 higher taxes. This is as of 1987, taxable, paid in '88. They've got $230 higher taxes than those communities with the least development. I know it's also been stated by many people that what we really need is a, is a type of a tourist attraction where we could frisk some of the Minnesotans that come over. I mean, I don't have anything against that. It's just that I, I, when I think of that, I think of a town that really does a genuinely good job of frisking Minnesotans is the village of Somerset. If anybody has ever been through the village of Somerset, I think they can understand what I'm saying. They have about every kind of recreational activity that you can imagine, some we bring our children to and some we wouldn't. I would also like to note that they do a pretty good job of frisking their taxpayers, too. A $70,000 home in the, in the village of Somerset will cost about $343 more in taxes than a $70,000 home in the city of Hudson. I know I've made comparisons with other localities. This argument by Mr. McAdams was that there were these cities that have the higher taxes and higher industry provides services. I don't expect, I guess Somerset is kind of a garden spot, so I guess the money is well spent. I guess I better not go near Somerset for one. But at any rate, I, I do feel that if this passes, that we're going to have in five years, we're going to have bigger problems out on the freeway, we're going to have a lack of low-cost housing units in this city, and we're going to have taxes that are much higher than we are, we have today. And I also suggest that you people are going to look, some of you people are going to look pretty dumb, and some of us are going to look pretty smart. I do ask that you don't give me the opportunity to tell you that I told you so. Vote this thing down. Join the thinking people in this council and vote it down once and for all. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
I suppose your family is all from there.
Actually, half of my... I guess I can't compare the value of an inner-tooth rental establishment. I'm sure the value is, the cancer is the same here, so. There's a, there's a question there. Did you compare it to the... Also, you compared some industrial cities, did you, in each of these cities, did you compare the per capita spending by the cities and by the school districts and the academy districts?
Per capita spending in what way?
Well, to see if there's more expenditures, try to determine why, why there is a variance in the...
Well, I think the reason it happens, Bob, is that they, if you're to ask me, is that there gets to be a demand in services that come about from, from the introduction of an industrial and a commercial base. I know that it's difficult for someone like yourself that's developed in the state of Minnesota, and I think that's true with some of our audience here. They, if you've lived in Minnesota, you may have observed a substantial benefit in areas where they do have an industrial, commercial base. The reason that is, is they really hit their industrial and commercial property very hard when it comes to taxation. They taxed it from there, as I can see, about twice of what we tax the property tax wise on this side of the river. That's why the mayor is able to bring people over here, or industries over here. The problem is that by virtue of the fact we don't hit them so hard, we lose the reason to bring them here on an industrial, or on a, on a tax relief basis. Doesn't mean we lose the reason to bring good industry in for jobs and for services. But what bothers me with the track is I don't see the jobs and the services. The, the developers are saying there's going to be two to three percent of the people in, yeah? I thought it was asking, answering.
No, you were, you were answering.
I thought you might have that one, too, Bob.
But I would like to get any questions answered that they've...
Sure.
So you're saying that industrial, are there more services? There are more services required by industrial real estate?
If, if I got, I hate to, I'm not, I don't...
Yes or no?
You still beat your wife, yes or no? No, the question, the question you ask is, and that's the problem with the type of modeling that I've seen come out of this, whether it's your model, my model, or any model, is that if you, if all you have is... is that if you, if all you have was industry in a city, I don't doubt of what the taxes could maybe be lower. The difficulty is that you can never isolate. You never have a city that's completely made up of industry. If you bring in industry, you also bring in people. And the lower the wage jobs, the more, more people you have in lower cost housing, that is not very helpful for the taxation. That's the reason, anybody can write a model, and I've seen Croiland have some that are interesting. They'll show that if it was an area where all industrial, it would be less cost for school services, obviously. But if people don't live in this area, they have to live somewhere else. It caused, it, and that is why I, I, you know, that I have tried to, to not look at models, because I can come up with something that'll show Croiland will cost us five hundred dollars a head as a, as a taxpayer, and you could find one that'll show five hundred less. I've just been trying to show you what happens in localities where they brought in industry. I think most of us here know that we don't move to Milwaukee, we don't move to Madison, we don't move to Somerset to get lower taxes. We may go there because they have good jobs, but if they don't have lower taxes, that's what all I've been trying to point out.
I'm just trying to isolate your, your study. I don't know what the reason is for the other communities, and why their taxes are high or low.
Well, all I'm saying.
Whether or not you actually know why, whether it's industrial, or whether the level of spending is different. And I, I know the level of spending in Milwaukee is nonsense.
No, but I would say that that's why I tried to look at the, St. Louis County villages and cities. And I was interested in it, that the two hundred, I also, that the two hundred and thirty-two dollar average higher tax in the villages and cities, the six most developed in St. Louis County, coincided very close to another study, which I don't know if you have before, you, Miss Crimner, I don't know. Okay. The ten largest cities, which are just totally different animals, I'll agree. In the population-wise in this state, I did the same type of study, and I found that the, the five of those ten that had the greatest industrial and housing and commercial base had taxes that were roughly two hundred and thirty dollars higher than those with the least. There's just, I mean, I'm not saying, and I haven't, I, I did not take a selective view. I've taken, they're random in each case, and I, I just, I stand by the original convention. And I've always had, right from the first time I spoke at one of these, that you just simply cannot develop your way out of paying the property tax. I've never seen it work. Do it on the basis of the jobs and the services that it provides the community.
Did you have any other questions?
My name is Tina Smith, I live in the town of Hudson. I've got two things to say, one is emotional and one is factual. I'd like to get rid of the facts first, that's okay. I'd like to quote Mr. Gordon Anderson in last week's paper. He said, "The hundreds of people have viewed our plans, meaning Croiland's plans, video and modeled, and I feel the majority are in favor of the project." Mr. Anderson, I would like to challenge you to get a thousand signatures for your feelings to be confirmed. I was the petition coordinator in the city of Hudson, and we easily obtained a thousand signatures, and at that point we just continued the effort. We were hoping that a thousand signatures would make a difference for the council. I would like to also speak in defense of the CCRD group. I want you to know that CCRD has become a dirty word in Hudson, and we've been called many things. The way I use CCRD is that it's just a base group to work with. In any organization, any citizen group, you don't want to be spinning your wheels, and you want to have some kind of organization, and that's what CCRD is. Meetings are open to the public. Mr. Bird was at one of our meetings, and it's funny. Mr. Berkey was at one of our meetings, and at that meeting, he spoke about Bird's charity. And Bird, I can't say anything against his charity because I don't know him. I'm sure that I'm known to people, they do ask. Now, Verne calls you a fairly sensitive man, and if you are a very sensitive man, I'd ask you to be serious, ask a question. I'd ask you to look over their feelings, both their needs and people's, who aren't in the public sector and that they count. The other thing I wanted to speak about is emotional. At the last council meeting, one of the Croiland attorneys impressed upon the council that dog racing is legal in this country, and that gambling is legal in this country. I couldn't help but think about some other activities that are also legal, and wondered if you would embrace both as quickly as you are under it. The two that came to mind, came to mind rather quickly, and the first one was new dancing. New dancing is legal in St. Louis County. Imagine putting that kind of entertainment next to this beautiful pit fence. It would bring in a lot of revenue, wouldn't it? You could even put an adult bookshelf next to that. Abortion is legal in this country. Not only is abortion legal, but teenage abortion can be performed without parental consent or parental notification. Probably Western Missus passing could use an abortion clinic. A lot of your business is going in Minneapolis and St. Paul. I imagine that the restaurants would profit from this, if you put it up on the hill, and after the abortion is performed, the girls could go have lunch at Perkins', or at A2. And I would think that brings in some tourism dollars. I would just ask you to, to consider these things. I know they sound crazy, and if Mr. Redner hadn't asked the audience not to boo, I probably would have been booed. But I'd ask you to think of this, and I'd ask you to ask God for wisdom, because God puts a heavy wisdom to anyone who asks it. Thank you.
My name is Bill Heezy, I'm a resident of the town of Hudson. I'd like to respond to a couple of remarks from Mr. Northstrand and his remarks this evening. The first is his concern or his fear that the Hudson economy is dependent on jobs in the Twin Cities. I'm equally concerned and fearful that his track is dependent upon patrons in the Twin Cities. To me, it's equally dangerous or even more so. Going beyond that, Mr. Northstrand mentioned a figure of a hundred and forty-four million dollars as the bottom line economic impact, or economic benefit, to the Hudson community from his proposal. I believe that figure, and let me reference to the fact that that was prepared by a nationally recognized consultant. I believe that that nationally recognized consultant is the Business and Industrial Planning Association of Austin, Texas, and the figure came from a report dated November of nineteen eighty-eight, which I have before me, entitled "The Economic Benefits from Her Mutual Greyhound Racing in Hudson's Council." I have only the executive summary of the final report. I believe that's also the situation based on the council. We were unable to get the entire report, and I'm unaware that the council has seen it. And that figure of a hundred and forty-four million is in this report. There's another report, though, that looks just like it, and it has the same title, and it's also called "Executive Summary of the Final Report", but this one was dated August of nineteen eighty-eight. And if you compare the two, you find some interesting, and to me, startling divergences in assumptions and conclusions by the nationally recognized consultant. For instance, in terms of total attendance at the track, the final report dated August, estimated total annual attendance would be approximately two point one million. Two months later, that had dropped twenty percent to one point six, six million. Now, the average attendance for three hundred and seventy-five performances in August was five thousand five hundred fifty. Two months later, it was four thousand four hundred, a twenty percent decline. Now, as any good businessman who's noticing twenty percent decline in demand for his product, the track decided to increase its capacity by sixteen percent. In August, the report stated that the ideal grandstand seating was sixty-nine hundred, based on a twenty percent decline in anticipated attendance. The November report says the ideal seating is eight thousand, an increase of sixteen percent. We need to provide parking for those extra recruits, so the parking lot in August went from thirty-four hundred to four thousand in November. And as Mr. Northstrand indicated, the total economic impact, five years down the road in a steady-state situation, estimated in the November report was a hundred and forty-four million. The comparable figure in the August report was a hundred and ninety-five million. Somewhere between August and November, fifty-one million, twenty-six percent disappeared. Let's hope that the consultant isn't looking at January report that's going to show us that fifty million has disappeared from November. I'd point out a couple of other interesting comparisons. New employment created. In the August report, the figure was one thousand jobs. In the November report, it had fallen to seven hundred and sixty, a decline of twenty-one percent, two hundred and fourteen jobs. Total new payroll, in August, it was twenty-four point two million. A pretty staggering number for one thousand jobs, that's a twenty-four thousand dollar a year average salary. By November, somebody figured that that does look a little off the mark, and the total payroll fell sixty-nine percent to seven point six million. The average salary, of course, fell from twenty-four two to nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Local sales tax revenues, we've heard a lot about tax generations in this facility. The August report estimated seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars in local sales tax. November, I'll finish up in just a second. November was two hundred and eighty-six thousand, a sixty percent decline. I would like to suggest to the council that the data that's been supplied on the, which is purported to be a detailed analysis of the operation of this track, seems to me to be woefully inadequate and, and totally, totally inadequate to make a reasoned decision on the operational methods of the program. Thank you.
I've got a question, I might, I might, I might read that report, yeah?
Oh, I'm sure.
I've got a question from Bill. I'm looking at the November report, and, uh, I don't know. And, uh, maybe, maybe this one should be addressed, and we'll find out why we didn't receive it. I would like to know the existence of this report and where it is, and why I haven't seen it. Does it exist, or is it your report, or?
The, uh, the executive summary report?
Well, I, I'm looking at the November, the report that I view is the November of eighty-eight report. Is there an August report?
Yes, there was an August report. Yes, there was an August report. I think the August, the August report was handed out at the promotional meeting, the first time we got the throw-out of that proposal. And I think we passed it around to the council at that time. I think that was preliminary reports, and so this bonds up questions to that.
It is fully filed.
But we just, we, I did pass it out tonight, and we had a promotional, uh...
If I might respond, in terms of the being of preliminary reports, the title page says, says "Executive Summary of the Final Report", and on the first page says "A detailed feasibility analysis has been completed for operation of the proposed Greyhound race track in Hudson." The same language appears on the first page of the November report, and the same title appears on the November report. So this is in no way that I can determine labeled preliminary report.
The November report is the final report, and the one that we, uh, allow.
Perhaps I can explain something. My name's Don Suppoy, I own a whole bank that's in Hudson. I was retained by Southern Property.
I guess if we don't have them respond, if we wait later and have them respond later, I would like it to be now, so that I can keep track of local Hudson. Is that okay, Don?
The consultant for the study, the August report was a draft report, and it was upgraded for November based upon some adjustments, adjustments that he took into consideration resulting from competing facilities such as the Twins and the Vikings and other professional sports. Now, a comment that he made here regarding attendance, attendance estimates are based on a collection of a market penetration factor, we define the average night attendance per performance. The August preliminary executive summary of the economic impact analysis was based on a selected market penetration factor of two and a half mils, or twenty point two five percent of the fifty-mile ring population of the greater Minneapolis, St. Paul, Mississippi area. The average night attendance at two and a half mils would be six thousand two hundred and forty-six people, and the total annual ten of two million eighty-two thousand, based on the assumption of two hundred and fifty nights and a hundred and twenty-five matinee performances during the year's operation. He made, the November final executive summary was based on a market penetration factor of two mils, resulted versus the two and a half, resulting in a night attendance average of four hundred, or four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven, and an average of four thousand nine hundred and forty-two. So it was an adjustment in the market penetration, taking into consideration the competing facilities of Canterbury Downs, the Vikings, Twins, North Stars, Hocky, and the Fisher Timberwolves. He explains that the two mil market penetration factor was a refinement in the preliminary result, taking that into consideration.
Just one more question here. You can also talk about the fact that your, your, your report itself salaries fluctuating. Now, I was, I was under the impression that when we first were talking about a thousand jobs, we were talking not only, we were not talking strictly of the jobs that were at the track.
That's correct.
We were talking about spin-off jobs, and then we narrowed that down to people who would absolutely be employed by State Frontiers.
Yes, that's right. The, uh, the figures that were saved in the table of the study were a combination of, well, there was first law construction jobs, and then there was the operating employment. And that consisted of the track employment as well as spin-off jobs in the community. And I believe the number was, the total number of employment was approximately seven hundred and eighty, of which three hundred and fourteen are the full-time employment positions that were being employed at the track.
Now, that was a question that I had too, that's why I asked you, because, and they did send you a letter, whether or not I'm even available to these people, but they did send you a letter clear upon that.
May I respond to that? Because I, I think this is perhaps in the scheme, I, I might have been percolating answers, and I totally could do it as well. Perhaps a direct question. Is the figure of one thousand jobs from annual operations in the August report comparable to a figure of seven hundred and sixty jobs in total oper, in total annual operations in November?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So on an apples to apples page, the one is twenty-one percent. In Hudson, we're not talking just the track, is the total employment, do you multiply it throughout the Hudson?
That's correct, yes. There was a refinement in the, in the multiplier factor for that, right.
You also addressed, especially from my perspective, the incredible decline in the anticipated payroll in twenty-four million to seven point six million.
Hey, take care.
Would the council take the necessary efforts, and so, present, to make sure it's by the council or by the citizens? These changes in data are extraordinary. These, these changes in data are, are extraordinary.
Well, I've often issued preliminary reports and I wish I hadn't after I done because the numbers are preliminary. And I, we have...
It was not considered to be a preliminary report.
Well, I understand that it is and, uh, I'm the preliminary executive summary.
Was the final report followed by a final report that made it followed by another final report?
I think, I think that we came back and, uh, I couldn't believe it, with a, with a, a report. A report that seemed odd at the beginning was, uh, we've got a lot of more conservative report. I think the numbers were, uh, aggressive and, uh, we came back with a, uh, signed report and we did what happened to the report that we used for the city's feeding project.
So, which one should we be using?
The one that we used all along.
Which one's that?
Them earlier.
So, which one?
The final, final, final report?
Jack, I don't think that's fair. I think we're using the report that's been...
It's fair because it's a fair question. I don't know which one is referring to, Bob, and I'd like to know.
The report has been in our booklet since, uh, this was handed out.
Which one?
The November report.
Yeah, that's on that.
The one we're using.
Which one's that?
I don't know the exact date that we've gotten this. It's the November report and it's the final report. And it's the one we've had. I was concerned that there was another report that we didn't have that we should be using.
Uh, I was retained by, uh, Southern Properties in regard to the site collection. I just want to make a couple of comments in respect to that. Hudson's a pretty unique area in a lot of respects because we have a lot of major subdivisions around the city of Hudson. Um, and that was a major concern in my site collection, that city sewer and water could be available, which this particular track site does. And that was a real major consideration. We have groundwater contamination in the area and that affects a lot of homes and a lot of values. Um, a lot of people may not recognize the fact that there's that many subdivisions out there, but when you look on a map and you start studying it, there are a lot of subdivisions that you don't see in other areas that maybe are served by city sewer and water. The major point being that if it does not have city sewer and water, we're going to have other problems to other residences in the territory. So, in my opinion, this was by far the best site from that perspective. Uh, number two, uh, it was next to the industrial park and affected by far the fewest residential people. I was very concerned that we did not affect a lot of residential people in the area. And I think there's people here that, that are close to that territory, but by far it affects the fewest people around. So, from a real interest point of view, um, city sewer and water being available, it being the furthest away from all, from other major residential developments, this is by far the best track site location. Um, another point that I'd like to make is that Hudson businesses, you know, if the city of Hudson needs to grow, we've got people come and go in and out of here, adult businesses here in Hudson. Um, I don't like to see that. It'd be nice if we keep the businesses here. Tourism will help that take place. Stillwater's got an extremely good city. They draw a lot of people in. I think we can do the same thing here. Bert Northstrand will do a first, first-class job of promoting this and he will draw first-class businesses here. The industrial development that goes along with his proposal is by far the most top-notch I've seen in a long time. And I have to commend Bert for his excellent development plan and the team that he put together. Another point I'd like to make is that a lot of people have the perception that this is going to be another Canterbury Downs. The scale of this is much smaller. It's not a Canterbury Downs. That's an important vision to have to go down to Dubuque Track. You'll see that. There isn't as large a traffic as people think there's going to be. They're familiar with Canterbury, so that's the only vision that they have. If it is not that large a scale, I was down to visit myself, um, I think that's important. That people realize that it's not the scale of Canterbury. It's going to bring numerous people here, but I think it's going to be done in a, in a first-class fashion. And I think Bert and his group will do that. Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Superlative? Anyone else? Back here in the room, you?
I'm just, I'm talking to a friend of mine from Detroit Township and moved there about a year ago. And if I knew a dog track was going to be put near my house, I probably would have, I'm sure would have never moved there. Um, I have a copy of the Hudson Star Observer that will be coming out tomorrow. And in there, there are five editorials speaking against the dog track. And there is one speaking for it. But the person that spoke for it was conveniently located in Rochester, Minnesota, and he just owned the business here. And I just, I've just seen this. I don't think this is an exception. I've seen a number of editorials against the dog tracks. Um, people of Hudson voted against paralegal bedding from the planning commission, Detroit Township, humanitarian organizations, and many of Hudson residents have spoken against the gambling dog tracks. Don't you have surveyed your districts and said that you are coming out with a fifty percent for, fifteen percent against the dog tracks? Well, I still feel that these percentages are still not going to justify using that land for a dog track. I think you, you need more support than that. And I don't know if Hudson really wants to even take gambling money that has been lost by thousands of people in a game of chance. Um, I hope this board can truly represent people and if you vote against the dog tracks.
Any questions, Mr.?
My name is Count Hilton. I have a feeling that the, uh, somewhat half the seizures through that the rule for four minutes was aimed so that, uh, I would find it difficult to even get up. I don't get wound up for that for any four minutes. Just a couple of things. Floyd, I'm trying to remember. I think that most of the discussion here has not been relevant except for the comments perhaps, uh, particularly of Mr. Tana and Mr. Gizi. And that is this, you are here to approve the operation and ownership of the track. And there has been no discussion about the operation and what it will be for the ownership except for Mr. Northstrand and some people in Florida alone. In other communities, they have demanded that a pro forma application to the state be presented and be made public before they would consider a resolution. And when I raised that issue weeks ago, it was suggested that perhaps the, perhaps the confidentiality that the racing board was putting on it would make that inappropriate. Well, the racing board has removed that confidentiality. That petition must be completed in seventeen days or less than seventeen days, by the seventeenth of the month, if you pass it. Why don't we see a pro forma copy so you know what you're approving? How many performances will there be? What will the exact hours be? What are the exact employees in the other companies? The other thing I'd like to say is sort of preliminary is that everybody wants to talk about that track down in Dubuque, owned by the community, operated for the community, for the benefit of the community, stuck out on a peninsula, totally isolated from residential and surrounding community. As a matter of fact, if one examines every single dog track that anybody has ever been through, there is no dog track located in a comparable area to the beautiful valley down on Astoria across the street from the Y and across the street from the area controlled by the Wild River Act where you proposed to put this dog track. All of the others are located either in isolated industrial areas where the geography or the industry totally isolated from any possible surrounding community such as the one in Dubuque, or a few of them are located in an isolated, uh, rural community. Now, to my main point. My main point is the same as it was when we passed that last resolution and that is there has been a corruption of the process here that makes it almost impossible for this hearing to have any meaning. Members of this board, members of this council have made promises to the citizens, public promises and private promises. One of them, who is about to cast a vote in favor of this resolution, said, "I promise you I will not vote for a resolution of support if there is any question of voting on a referendum." "I have been accused of doing a lot of dastardly things, but that would be very dastardly." Well, that's about to happen. And it's about to happen under the most, the guise of following the instructions of the attorney in perverting your own law. What you've had here is a perversion and you know it and every citizen knows it and we're pretending it has not happened. You have a law that says they can't build a dog track on that parcel unless you have the approval of your plan commission. And you told us, "Let the process work. Don't bring these petitions and don't have a referendum now. We don't even know if we're going to approve it. Let the process work," you say. So, the process works and the facts come out and that first August planning report is in the files of the plan commission and they study everything. They study traffic and they study lights and they study sound and they say, "This is not the right site. We don't want to rezone this property from residential A." And the city attorney gets up and says, "Well, you have to have one vote, one vote up or down for the whole shopping center, industrial center." So, they say, "Okay, we'll vote in favor of it, but we vote that there's no dog tracks permitted in that highway commercial zone and no dog tracks permitted in the, on parcel D."
Excuse me, Mr.?
So, then, how about one minute? I was going to wish, if you want to, I'll wait till the others are through or one minute more now. Thank you. Then what happened is you had had a council meeting and sent it back to the planning board because you said, "We want conditions on it if it's going to be used by a dog track." And the council said to you, "We recommend against the dog track. We vote against the dog track. We will not deem it appropriate for a dog track and we do not want a dog track on parcel D." So, then you get up here with a fancy resolution faxed over from the developer's attorney and mailed out to the council on the night, on the Friday night before the meeting. And you say, "Okay, we got a gimmick. We're going to sweep what you called, or what the developer's attorney called, the legal shrubbery out of the way by passing a number of resolutions so complex that I defy anybody in, other than the attorneys in this room and even half of them to try to explain it." But what it basically mean is, "We don't care what our ordinances are. We don't care what the planning commission is. We are committed to this dog track and every promise you've ever made to us is a lie." This is sleaze and that's what you're bringing to Hudson. Not the sleaze of the dog track, but the sleaze and corruption of the political processes that you're engaged in here. And I'm here to tell you... I'm just here to tell you that when this is over, we'll be in a better forum with our objective decision-making.
My name is Bruce Moffett and resident of the city of Hudson. Ken just talked about the corruption within the system that's occurred and that occurred just recently and was great offense and has disgraced the citizens of the Hut, uh, the Hudson area. What I'd like to talk about are some things that happened earlier on that are equally disgraceful. One is that a referendum was requested by the citizens. It was voted unanimously by this common council, in fact, that one would be held. Had it not been rescinded, it was scheduled for February. Two weeks shortly after that, it was rescinded. It was rescinded, as it appears to be, because of the threats of the developer, but in fact, that wasn't legal. Fact of the matter is that Bill Madozovich, the attorney, they had clearly an opinion to the council that it was legal. Other cities and towns across Wisconsin, in fact, have had referendums. When it was rescinded, Mark Strino, in the motion that he made, said in fact later on that there would be a referendum that was called for. He had three conditions, that the land be in the city and the annexation process complete, that information about the development be dispersed and that it be still relevant. We will not have a referendum before this special support resolution is voted on. I talked to Bronco Turzak, the chairman of the racing board, and I said, "Bronco, if we have a referendum after the support resolution is voted on, what does that mean?" And he said, "Who is kidding who? A referendum is meaningless, in fact, after the vote of the support resolution." This was a promise that was made by Mark Strino in the motion. It was seconded by Bob Angleton. Bob Angleton was also the one that seconded the motion calling for the referendum two weeks previous to that. Other promises were made. Councilperson Sandy Berg stated that in fact she would vote no on a support resolution if in fact it was called for prior to a referendum being held. She also said that no special considerations would be made, and this was literally months ago. The fact is, many special considerations have been made. It appears the law has been broken and it also appears that through the public hearing process later on, the council decides that there's going to change many of the laws that have gotten in the way of the developer here. That is disrespectful to the citizens who have elected you to uphold the law, not to disobey the law. The state referendum was held in the city and the city residents voted it down. They said at that level that they simply do not want this type of development. That in fact should be evident enough and your vote should be cast in favor of what the, the majority of the people want. Public opinion survey results were held by CCRD and of those holding an opinion, seven out of ten said they simply do not want a dog track in their community. Bert Northstrand's people conducted a, a public opinion survey. The question was never asked if the people in fact want to have a dog track here. A petition in opposition was circulated and Tina Smith has referred to that. The thousand signatures that simply said, "We don't want a dog track." There was no response from the council when that was submitted at all. There also was a petition for a referendum, uh, circulated with thirteen hundred signatures. That's equal to eighty percent of those that voted in the last governor's election. Council had a couple of opportunities at that time. They simply could have adopted the ordinance that was requested and petitioned for the referendum or in fact they could push it back as a vote on the ordinance in April. They decided to do the latter. They pushed it back so that in fact when a referendum is held in May or June, it will have no impact. It will be meaningless to what is happening right now. Chronically, the council has denied the opportunity for citizens to have their referendum. Chronically, the developers, specifically Bert North, Northstrand, have taken effort to deny that a referendum be held. There has been an awful lot of legal money spent in order that citizens are not heard on this issue. We're here for, please, I'm just finishing. We're here for three considerations. Ownership, there's really been no disclosure on ownership. A couple pieces of paper blot at the last day is not adequate review. And we all know due process and you know citizens' rights. And that is that when developers bring information, there should be adequate time for review. There should be adequate rebuttal to those citizens. And to bring this at the last moment and then to suggest that not even giving us a copy is adequate review is ludicrous. And that is another abuse of power. Location, you don't have a location. You don't have a location because the planning commission said it's inappropriate use. a location because the planning commission said it's inappropriate use, and they set it for some very reasonable reasons: traffic, noise, air, adjacent property. The final is operation, and that's in question. There's been no substantive reports provided by the developers to the people that suggest that you know anything about operation at this point in time. All three legs, that your support resolution that you very well may vote on tonight, remain unanswered.
Yes, Jim?
My name is Jody Bond. I've been a resident of Troy Township for approximately twelve years. In response to the gentleman's question about County Road F, what is going to happen going south down County Road F, and I asked that question two weeks ago, and never received an answer. So I called the highway department, the county highway department, and talked to gentleman mayor. County Road F south of Double S was resurfaced last year. They are not doing anything to County Road F going south. That means if this race track is where Mr. Norstrand would like it to be, we are going to have a big problem. People coming from Red Wing, Prescott, Hastings, River Falls, Ellsworth are going to be traveling that road. It's a two-lane county road. It's not built for that kind of traffic. One of the biggest problems driving that road at night is the wildlife. It has caused many accidents. I don't want to be on that road after these people have been let out of their dog tracks, and they've been partying and drinking all night. I think, I really ask you to think about these things. I don't live in the city of Hudson, but believe me, I spend much of my time here. I respond to ladies that talk about the traffic. I brought plenty of citizens present in the city of Hudson, and I've tried and do all my shopping here. I love the town. I've lived here. I brought up three children. It's just, you can't find a nicer place to live for a family in the Midwest. And I just think, if any of you have a family and care about them, you don't want to change this town. The question I have to Mr. Norstrand is, how many days of the year are you planning, or months of the year are you planning to have this dog track run?
Can you put first to the question?
So it's not going to be all year. Okay. This is another problem. I've talked to so many people in this town that are so confused. I've heard people tell me, "This is wonderful. Mr. Norstrand is giving us a Carmichael interchange." I called the county, the highway department. Mr. Norstrand is not giving us a Carmichael interchange. The state has planned that for the past five years. Mr. Norstrand is not giving us that. I have called Florida, and I've talked to the dog tracks, the comments in Sarasota, the dog tracks in Florida, where you would think the biggest dog tracks would be, and he has already told that he's involved with those as owners. They only run five months out of the year. They run five months in Sarasota, then they move up to Tampa, then they move to West Palm Beach. They're open at different times. In fact, Sarasota's open from May to September. They're open at the quietest time because they're on a road that can't handle the traffic very well. In Tampa, they're open from January through May. Where do these people come from? The people that work these dog tracks work a circuit that leaves Sarasota, and they will walk to Tampa. Are you planning on bringing some of these people from Florida up here to work also for these part-time jobs? There's not enough people in Hudson. You can go, when the college kids leave and go back to school, Burger King, Taco John's, all of them have their signs up begging for help. There is not enough people in Hudson to fill these positions. There's no need for it. And as far as Stillwater, as one gal said last week, laughing at us, if they're laughing at us, they're laughing at us because we're not making use of the natural environment we have, the riverfront, like they have. That has become a major attraction in Stillwater, and we don't seem to use it. Yes, the Beckins water dock, that was nice, but I'd like to leave Hudson the way it is, and I ask you to please think about it. If these thousand people in the city of Hudson sign a petition and elected you people to serve them, I really think you owe them something to think about. And I also think you ought to think about the people in Troy Township, because you are putting it in our backyard. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question just about the performances? Because the feasibility study talks about two hundred and fifty nighttime and a hundred and twenty-five days. And we just said April first through December fifteenth, that's about two hundred and fifteen days, so you can't get two hundred and fifty nighttime performances. I mean, I don't, this is the first I've heard these figures, and I've discussed the submission of data, the times and when they're going to have it, just before the last planning board meeting. I've never heard these, and they don't fit with any of the, either of the two feasibility.
It's probably a fun report.
Perhaps ten hours, or ten, or maybe five.
Two hundred and fifty performances a year on a nighttime basis, and a hundred and twenty-five matinees, total three hundred and seventy-five. That's a period of.
That is a legal. That you can't get that in the April fifteenth through December fifteenth, it's only two ten days. It's about two hundred and ten days. You can't get two hundred and fifty nighttime performances on a two hundred and ten days.
I wish I could talk like a lawyer, but I can't. So I'm going to say a few things that have been on my mind. First is, I heard somebody say that they're going to have a problem trying to find hired help. I'm semi-retired, and I'm sure there are a lot of other people here in this room that are also semi-retired, that would like to have a part-time job that would pay a little over four to four and a half, five dollars an hour. I have been looking. I can't find them. Second, I did take a poll in my area. It's not very good. I won't argue that point, but I worked for three nights straight on the telephone in my ward, and in my ward, I had forty-nine people that supported Troy Land and a race track. They didn't, they wanted a race track. They want the building. They want the shopping centers and everything that go along with it. I had thirty people that were strongly against it. I had eleven people that were undecided. And I called ninety people. It's not an easy job to sit down and call that many people, but I did it, and I'm glad I did it. And I just hope that the city council will go for something for once, instead of backing down and every time it seems like there's something good for the community, they get shoved off to the wayside. I would like to see this go through. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Brown. I'm a resident of Hudson. I'm going to make a couple of quick comments, and then I have some questions, and I want to make the comments first so that I'm not using up my four minutes. Mr. Norstrand, I appreciate you sharing with us the charitable giving of the heck. Sounds like their tracks are very profitable in Florida. I wasn't aware that you were involved with them. I do not think, however, that Hudson, Wisconsin, is a Fort Myers or a Miami. I also don't think that the Gaiapum dog tracks would offer family entertainment. I don't think the people of our town are going to support it or take their families to it. I think if it wasn't the population between cities that you were counting on growing on, you wouldn't have any support for your tracks. I also would like the city council, somebody on the city council, maybe Mr. Brenner would like to address this. I've been to a planning commission meeting, and I've been to the last city council meeting, and I've heard Lane Flucci and other people talk about what it's going to be like for them to be located next to a dog track. They ask questions. They say that they're three hundred feet away, and so they have no legal recourse. Nobody ever responds to them. Nobody ever answers their questions. They have no recourse, apparently, under the letter of the law, but it seems to me that somebody has a moral obligation to them. Some type of good faith involved with this, but I don't see it happening. In terms of the shopping that was brought up, I would gladly undergo the continued shopping in the Twin Cities, Mrs. Walsh, as compared to having a dog gambling track across from the YMCA camp. Mandy, you told me when I talked to you the afternoon of the city council meeting that you were morally opposed to the tracks, that you talked to many people.
I was morally opposed to gambling.
Okay, morally opposed to gambling. Thank you. Mark Strino, when I talked to you the other night, you told me that you were morally opposed to tracks, that you, oh, fine, that you would not, I think you said the correct, that you would not, you probably go to one side of curiosity, whatever. I just wish we could see some moral leadership within our city council beyond just Mr. Bro and Ms. Second. Now I have some questions. I'd like to know, Mr. Norstrand has shared with us some of the economic benefits that Hudson is going to derive from the dog tracks. I'd like to know, in terms of operation, how much Mr. Norstrand will be making, for example, in the first year of operation? I'm sure since he's involved in some of the other tracks that he can share that information with us, and I'm sure the council, because they look into this so exhaustively, must have that information too. He can't provide it with me. Maybe somebody on the council can. I'd also like some specifics on how the track structure will be set up. I don't know much about the legalities of the taxes, and you'll have to explain it to me in layman's terms, but I understand with the industrial parks that we have currently, that there was some type of tax package, is that correct, Jack, in which the taxes derived from those businesses went to support or finance sewer and that kind of stuff up there? Am I right or wrong? Is that right? So the taxes from those businesses did not go to support the school system or anything else until just this year when that was completed? I'd like some specifics from the city council on how they plan to handle taxes if this goes through on Mr. Norstrand's dog tracks.
No, it's never been proposed that he would be taxing from economy.
But that's one of my questions. I'd like to know.
A dog track cannot be of proper use for taxing and financing. It may be prohibited by state law.
Fine, that's helpful. Thank you. Well, I guess that's about all I have to say. I'm opposed to track, as is obvious. I resent what's been happening. Many people share my feelings. Maybe Mr. Norstrand would like to respond to my question about how much he stands to make on tracks. Oh, and maybe somebody else could also respond to the YMCA camp issue. Maybe Gordy, you've been involved with YMCA. You know what an asset it is to our community. You know the many families, not just from Hudson, but from surrounding communities and from the eastern Twin Cities that send children to that camp. And do you honestly think with all the traffic that's going to the dog tracks, that we're going to clean each other's minds? We heard it from Gordy Anderson. Thank you, Gordy. Can I add something on the revenues of Mr. Norstrand, such as, I'm sure the city council must have asked him, and I haven't been saying anything to him.